Just for the fact that you've been going to the school boards for a while, it dropped off and now it's picking up, so I need to put more money back in there to cover those expenses because we've gone over the past couple of years. Everything else seems to be pretty much in line with the rest of these as far as the salaries are concerned. That's basically a lot of what you're going to see over the first part of administration is just increases to salary, you know, with some slight increases to some materials and supplies throughout it. Just to give you a couple of things as we go through here, like I say, there's not a whole lot of big difference when we come through until we get to operation and plant, which is really to be on page 417. And what I wanted to bring up was two items here, fuel oil. We're holding line on fuel oil. As you know, we currently have had a very nice savings due to the decrease in the price of home heating fuel, just as you have at your homes, which is great to see, but we don't know how long that's going to, you know, pick up. So we're right now budgeting for the same amount of money. You know, we know the size, we know how much fuel oil we typically go through. I mean, a lot of it is dependent upon, you know, the weather and how cold it gets. Whereas the next line, electricity, this is something we've seen over the past couple of years is even though the rates have been pretty steady, there's no big spikes in it, but what is happening is our usage is going up. We've been putting a lot of, you know, things to help with the usage, but with all the new technology that's in the buildings and things of that nature, it is, we are using more electricity just because we have more devices. Now, the devices we're purchasing are more energy efficient, but we just have more devices. So Sheldon is requesting that we increase the electrical by about $14,500 to cover increased usage. That's the best way to put it. We put some extra money. So those are the things, the big items in operation and maintenance. And in maintenance itself, he's just looking to add some more money to supplies because the supplies are going up unfortunately. And that's the same thing with central storeroom at the bottom. That's where we buy our paper and things of that nature. It's been costing us a little bit more than in previous years. Go over to page five. Really not too much to point out, except down at the very bottom, the last budget code there is administration charges from BOSI's. And you see, you know, about an eight and a half percent increase. We don't have the exact figure yet. Kind of been told that BOSI's overall is in about the 3% range, except when it comes to this particular line. And this is where we retire health is paid for. So when a person at BOSI's retires, their charge goes into here because they can't charge the district. It's not like they can put it into a program and say, okay, this is a teacher for the deaf and, you know, they figure out what the cost is. Once they become retired, it comes into administration. There's no program to offset it or anything of that nature, so that charge comes directly down onto the school districts. And that is done by attendance. Okay? So we're about 3% of all the student population in Dutchess County, so this is 3% of the BOSI's administrative cost. Hopefully very shortly, I'm hoping we're supposed to be meeting next Friday. I'm hoping we'll get actual real figures that I can put in here. This is a guesstimate. Joe is on the BOSI's budget advisory, and he told me this one's higher than everything else. So I took a guess at about eight and a half percent because he said it was at least double of what the rest of the program was. So hopefully we'll get real numbers for our next draft. Page six, just to give you an idea here, the third code here is the salaries curriculum development, all district. You can see here that two years ago, we were at $45,000. The board last year expanded it up $30,000 to $75,000 with all the changes to the Common Core and having people come in and write curriculum over the summertime. He's looking at an additional $5,000 to the 75 last year for $80,000 a year. One of the things that Marvin has had the ability to do in previous years was to use his federal programs. His federal programs are shrinking, and he doesn't get as much money from those federal programs, so he's trying to make it up now coming to the taxpayer, basically is what he's doing. Federal government, basically every year is just less and less and less that we get. Low poverty, good academic scores, doesn't equate to more money. Just doesn't work that way. I get all these grant applications, the first thing I look for. What's your criteria? Oh, you gotta be 50% free and reduced? Not even going to read it. Why do it? Because, you know, they're going to get thrown out anyways. So Marvin is looking for an additional amount there. Also with the clerical salaries here, you see right below, it's somewhat of a significant increase, and that is, is that the federal projects have less money to pay for the people. So a lot of that burden now has to come onto the general fund, unfortunately. Also, the other thing, no, that doesn't pertain to this one. And we go to the next section, which is supervision. For regular school, you'll see there's no increase in the principal salaries. They're in negotiation for next year, so their monies are, for negotiation, are budgeted in employee benefits. So that's why you're saying zero there. Okay? So I'm sure that was a question in your mind. It's like that. And then as we see, as we go through here, these are the requests that are coming from the, each of the buildings, various types of things. And they actually did a pretty good job throughout the year. They didn't go a little bit higher than their previous year, but it wasn't 10, 15, 20%. Most of them were like 3, 4% higher than they were before, but they shifted some monies If we go over on to the next page, page seven, and in towards the middle section there, you'll see the salaries. And this is where a bulk of your monies are in these few lines, and these are teacher salaries. I don't want to get too, too much into it, but I don't want to, you know, widely concern you too much. You see a big 45% increase in the Keeper Garden? Well, it was only last year budgeted for three positions, so now it's four. You know, so that's why you're seeing a huge number there. Also, in the second one here, we've taken into consideration all the retirements and that, and a lot of these have significantly dropped off as far as that's concerned. And we see a negative $12,000 in the teacher aides at the bottom, and that's at least the health aide being accessed. But we did need to increase, you know, we had two positions, but unfortunately, one of the things that's happened now is that we have some students who stay after school, and they need to have someone with them. And we have to, and that's something that was never budgeted for before. We currently have three students that must have an aide with them after school, and they are here every day after school, working on something, whether it be a club, the library, something or other. And that's three hours a day I didn't budget for, so that's why it didn't go down as much as I hoped it would, but we're also having to pick up those services. If we go on to the next page, you know, nothing really jumps out there. These are just your equipment request, you know, overall equipment requests are down about $6,000. Let's see. And as we go over to the next page, just contractual expenses are down about $4,600, so right there, they've come in about 10 grand less. Area that is increasing is the textbooks. And if we take a look, the bottom line on the textbooks is an increase of about $16,500. Most of that is in the high school and being in the math. I think the biggest thing about math so far is they haven't found that textbook for Common Core and for the various subjects. So, and I think they still haven't found it yet. So, you know, I think, I think maybe they have found it, and they're going to make a decision for next year, you know, this spring for next year. So I think that's the big number there is math textbooks related to the Common Core. If we go on to the next page, at the very top, we see BOSI Services going up $25,000, and that is, is one additional student in the alternative high school placement. So that's, that accounts for the extra $25,000 there. So nothing too, too big for the rest of the 2110s, which is your, which is a bulk of what we do here, and that's teaching. The next part is programs for the disabilities. In that first line, you see initial $121,000, and that's where the 1.5 ESL teachers are. English is a second language, so that's why you see the big bump of about 8%. And that has to deal with ESL. But it already had taken into consideration a retirement there because we knew about that retirement earlier. If we go on to the next page, in the middle or a third of the way down, 2250, 472, tuition other. This number luckily, I want to say luckily, that's not the word to use here, is, that number was much higher in the rollover budget. That student who was in a, in a school, has left our school district and went back to another district, but had been in the budget for about $200,000. Very severe case, but it's not our responsibility at this time, but that's not to say that could change. It could change anytime. It could change tomorrow. But the real big one is a couple of lines down, and that's the BOSI Services. And that are students that are going to our BOSI's. I don't know the exact numbers. I think last year I had maybe four, five kids. I'm now close to, I think, 14 at my last count.
14? Did you say 14?
Yeah. I think I'll have to go back. It may be a couple less than that. Because I know why. It is a couple less than that because one of them is a teacher, has to come here, and that's an expensive one. And so they need to come here. But I'm still fine tuning that one with Richard. He's gone through CSE meetings currently, and hopefully, you know, based on those conversations, he talked about one or possibly two kids coming back to the district yet. So that would help reduce it, but until I, until I really sit down with Richard and he says, yeah, that person's coming back, then I can, I can take that person out of there. So I'm hoping there's some room there. The next section under occupational education, you see an increase of $28,000. Seems quite high. And the reason for that is, is they have opened up a occupa, an alternative education program across the river in Kingston done by Ulster BOSI's. I can't remember the name of it off the top of my head, but it's a specialized program that is being run through the four district, Dutchess, Ulster, Orange, I don't know, I don't know if it was Green or one or the other on the other side. There's four counties that have gone together, the lead being through Ulster BOSI's for a program. It's a six-year program, nine through 12, and then years one and two of community college. So this is a new program. We do have one student currently, and that program is double the cost of the Dutchess program. Dutchess program's a half-day program. This is a full-day program. So that's being accounted for here. I don't remember the name of that program. It slips my mind. Sorry about that. I'll come back with it. We had the, but that's why you see, you know, that increase of $28,000. It is not all of the BOSI's costs, I mean, are up about 3%, but most of that is a new program across the river that we have one student in. If we go over on to the second page, or not the second page, the next page, and about halfway down under the software supply, you'll see it all gets hashtagged out over to the right. I believe this is a, is a double cost because I think, I believe I have those costs already under BOSI Services. It's something I have to double check with, with Mr. Jensen to make sure that that's the case, that this isn't something new. I think he just budgeted for his databases in software where we purchase them through BOSI's. So that money's already through BOSI's. So that's, I'm hoping that's something that can come right on out. The last one at the very bottom of this page is the BOSI Services Computers. This would have it where we were looking at Plan A, which was top of the, you know, the most cost for that. So that is what is currently budgeted in this particular budget. I don't remember the specifics of it, but it was Plan A of the technology project, which was to get to more one-to-one type of down at the elementary school. I bet you the thing will be whipping up. But I don't know what will come up. There's a big, this Friday, Steve is having conference day, and hopefully by the end of that conference day, we'll have some direction in which the middle school would like to go because that will drive, you know, where we're going there. Next page, really nothing too much. It's really just salary increases, basically. If we go over to Health Services, you'll see on the first line in Health Services, a percentage increase, which is, is a little high there, and that's because our athletes. We have a few athletes that have to have a nurse with them, and they go to away games because we don't have a trainer that goes with them. They have to have a nurse that goes with them. So a nurse goes with certain athletes to away contests, diabetics, things of that nature, where a coach just isn't, doesn't have that medical expertise to do that. So there's money in there to provide medical services for athletes at away games. Let's see. Anything else on this page? Nope. Hey, next couple of pages. I mean, Interscholastic, I think I'll be sitting down with Steve here now that we have a merger plan in place. Well, hopefully by the end of tonight, we'll have a merger plan in place with Pine Plains, and then I can sit down and do that because the money that's in here is based on a program at Spacken Call that we, you know. So I think we have some savings there. It's just a matter of moving those monies around and taking a look at that. The transportation part was already, that's always been there. It's just us, it's a savings issue, so that wasn't an issue, building that back in. And as we turn the page over, starting at the top of the line, reducing fuel oil or gasoline by $12,000, and that's just a matter of, just a decrease in the price of fuel. And I'm hoping maybe I'm able to sharpen it a little bit more. I'm always afraid that something's going to happen out of our control, out of everybody's control, that all of a sudden we see prices go back to where they were, or even worse.
They're on the way back up?
I just, you don't know. There's just too many things that can happen as far as that's concerned. So also under transportation, I have added a bus run for a handicap in the non-public. I'm anticipating two new runs there based on some early information I have received from, from requests I just, I know have occurred over the year, but were unable to provide it since they didn't file on a timely fashion. But I'm sure they'll file timely when they realize they lost out on their transportation because they didn't file soon enough. Under employee benefits, there's been a decrease to the employees' retirement system, which is kind of significant, almost saving us a little over $90,000. At the same time, in the teachers' retirement system, they've reduced and they set their rate. Their rate is set at 13.26, so there's, saved over $460,000 there. And you'll see even, there'll be some more savings with the second draft there because that was at 3.5% the first draft. So the second draft goes to 3.26. So security goes down a little bit. Workers' comp, that's just a placeholder right now. We have a meeting next Friday, so I'll have a better idea of exactly what that should be. And if we go over on to the last page, probably the biggest number here is the health insurance. Seeing a pretty significant increase there, and what has occurred over the past year or two is the following, and it is hurting us. We had many teachers and non-teaching, many employees take a buyout and not get the health insurance. But a number of those people who took buyouts in the past have now taken the insurance. So we've gone from, oh, that cost us $900 to, oh, that cost us $20,000 now. So, I mean, so some of that has occurred. So what has occurred with the domestic partner, as we've had quite a few domestic partners sign up over the past couple of years, and they've added, they've gone from individuals now to family. Gone from $10,000 to $24,000. It's, they're right, they can do it, but a lot of this has been happening. Also put a little money in here for the Affordable Care Act, for the potential of an employee reaching those particular things that currently doesn't receive it, but may receive it because of the hours they work as, maybe as a substitute, teacher sub, a cafeteria worker. Quite possible. Don't, do we think anybody's going to hit it? But it's possible, so I want to leave myself a little room there. In fact, in the first year, I take the penalty because the penalty's a lot less than getting the health insurance. But that changes. It gets expensive after a while. And then when we get to debt service, there's an overall decrease of about $5,000. And so overall, we're looking, this first draft was just slightly under $1.5 million increase or 4.84%. All right. Any questions on that first part? Okay.
Hard to do without knowing what we're actually going to get, right?
Yeah. Well, that's, that's a part of it.
That's the next part of it.
Well, we're almost going to get there. First thing I want to do is go to the tax levy limit. So let's go to that first. It's still the draft, but this is pretty close. There's still one number we don't have, but it isn't going to change too, too much. So this looks like this. It should have come unbound with the, it should have been like right after the revenues.
Well, that would have been with your first draft, so.
It would have been with the first draft. All right. I'll make sure we, tell me what everybody's missing, and I'll make sure we get you a little bit of copies. So what we do is we start with last year's tax levy, which was almost $26 million. We had a tax growth factor of .61, which is very healthy. So the Rhinebeck Central School District, all our properties this past year had a growth, new additions, new buildings, new homes, a .61%. Once again, that's very good compared to the rest of the county. It's actually been very good, and we've had a couple of good years put together there. We then add in our pilots, all right? We subtract out taxes levied for exemptions during prior year, and this is the capital exclusion, and that's, this number's correct. The one on the next page, we don't know yet until we get state aid runs, but so I'm just using the same number because our, it hasn't moved too much. So our allowable tax growth levy is the lesser of 2% or the CPI? CPI was 1.62%.
Is that fixed now?
It's fixed now. That's fixed. So the .61 and the .162, 1.62, those are fixed. There's no changing those. Our pilots increase next year, so that takes away from our ability to, the difference between the pilots up here is what we're losing in tax revenue because we're getting it in a pilot. They've come up with all these ways to make sure you, you don't advance in any shape or form or get any money saved. And then last year, we, we were under the cap by $2,420, so that avails us to be able to carry that over to this year. If we go on to the next page, which basically, you know, brings that number over, we have the capital exclusion, which I'm just using the same number as I had on the previous page. This is the number that will change. I don't know if it'll go up, it'll go down, but it's going to be pretty close to that number. So what that leaves us with is a maximum allowable levy of $26,536,714 or 2.18%. So a little bit higher than, you know, everybody calls the tax, you know, the 2% tax cap. It's a little bit higher. Actually, it's really 1.62, and then it's our growth here that drives the rest of it up and above because we have that much more to be able to tax, therefore they say you can do it. So that's where we go at the tax levy. And if we get to the next document, the one I gave you at your desk tonight. Okay? That's this one here.
Clipped in the middle?
Yeah. This is the one I had at your desk tonight. It's just a two-pager. It's the first draft of, I don't know, I didn't put revenue budget up there, but should have done that, not to change that for next time.
They're both 127, so. Yeah, which is the, the number that you chose?
The bottom, at the bottom, should be 952, 70. Yeah, the other one, not, not right. That bottom line, that bottom figure was subtracted from last year's figure, not this There's not much that happens on the revenue side. There's really only really two things, state aid and taxes. There are some other things, little things, and I won't go over the first part with taxes. We will bypass that, we'll come back to that. But our non-resident tuitions, I'm cutting that in half. As much as we had a lot of interest last year in coming here, none of it came true. So we're, I'm just not budgeting that amount of money, so that's just, we're going to be short there. All the other revenues are pretty much coming in as stated, some a little higher, some a little lower. But what I want to do is go to the second page, and that's with the state aid. I kept it at zero. I don't know what it's going to be. Joe sent me a blurb today that said that the, it's, I think he, I think it said about a third of the school, if, if, if the governor doesn't get his way and keeps everything frozen, like he does, it reruns the figures or whatever, actually a third of the school districts are going down, and two-thirds are going up. And I think that all gets into that excess aid where we get more because we have more special ed students. So that, that's the thing that drives this thing. So who knows what's going to go up, what's going to go down? I have a feeling though, in the end, we're all going to see something going up. I don't know. I mean, that's a whole political thing. Who knows? I don't even know what to say. It'd be good to see what the numbers are, but then again, I want to, even that, I'm not even sure, you know? I really want, I like to be a lot, like a lot of the other states where they do multiple year, you know, state aid runs so that you know what you're looking at, not only this coming year, but the year after that, so you have an idea and you can start planning for these things. Fortunately, it doesn't allow us to do that. So as you see here, I've kept state aid just flat, no changes whatsoever. So as I go back to the first page and we look at our real property taxes, we see an increase of $1.5 million, which is 5.84%, which is, you looked at the bottom line, $952,000 above that tax levy limit. But it has come down, and that is in the second draft here. If you go to your, inside your book here, 4.5, we did come up with what you're looking at tonight. And that includes the five retirements and a couple of the little things that I've gotten some information about. There's a couple adds here. BOSI Services, $4,000. You looked at a software a couple of weeks ago with the APPR called Staff Track. That is the best money I could ever spend for $4,000. It's, it's that, or you buy the $60,000 version each and every year. So to me, I like the $4,000 version. It's a real nice program. It'll help with our APPR. It's the reporting to the state. The state is now asking not only for all that student information we have, you should now see all the teacher information they want. It's unreal. It is just humongous, the amount of information they want. And of course, there's no program out there to keep, keep track of that all, but Staff Track is somebody we looked at. We actually work with their student information system. So, no, it's not the student information. What do we use them for? We do their, they do our scoring. They do our scoring for ELA and math tests and things of that nature. Instead of our teachers going out to do that, we hire them to do it. We want our teachers in the classroom, not scoring tests and not being in substitutes being in there for a couple of days. So the middle school thing, I missed a, I missed a particular, it's called, what do they call it? Their teams. They're Buckley, I forgot what they call it. They call it the Big Team. But I left one of the stipends out, so I noticed that and put that stipend back in. Health insurance, $105,000, that's for five new teachers. One of the things when a teacher retires, though we do get breakage, One of the things, when a teacher retires, though we do get breakage, you don't get breakage in health insurance, because now we have five potential of extra health insurances that we'll have to pick up. And I always budget them at family. I don't want anybody to come back and say, hey, better make sure you hire a single person, because we don't want to pay, we don't, you know. So, that, I don't even want anybody even think that. But, you know, so, we're fully budgeting, that should never be a consideration. So, those are the adds. Now, the takeaways are, for the first four budget codes here, represent the five teachers tonight who have put in for their retirement. So, I'm assuming you are going to accept them, so I did go through and do that math. Also, it reduces our teacher retirement system by $63,000, because there's less salary, so less contribution, and social security. So overall, this decreases the budget by $244,000, so the current second budget, second draft budget is slightly over $32.1 million, which is 4.05. We now have a tax levy of 4.9 percent, which still leaves us $708,000 over the property, the tax level. Questions? A big number.
I, I understand why you did the, the state aid calculation the way you did, and, you know, I think you're in an impossible position here, and as we all are, because of the games that are being played in Albany. But, I have to say that I don't know how we can responsibly take the position that there is any particular aid formula that we feel confident that we're going to receive. I mean, even saying it's going to be flat, in my view, is not a responsible position, because we don't know. We don't know what we're going to get. It may be that when all is said and done, we get less aid than we had before, and then the assumptions that we've made based on this will be worse, maybe a lot worse.
Could be. Oh, yeah.
I am, I am, I am utterly at a loss for how we're supposed to do this budgeting responsibly. We can't just make up numbers, and that's essentially what's happening on the revenue side. It's not irresponsible making up numbers, but it's still made up numbers.
Yeah. Anything we put in there is made up.
Yeah.
Anything.
But, I mean, it's not like in previous years, where at least we had a floor, and we might do better, or we might not do better, but we weren't going to do worse.
We weren't going to go lower.
Right.
I agree with that. No, no doubt about it. I, I have a feeling that, I'm hoping, I'm hoping there's going to be enough pressure from all the school districts, that he's going to have to release something. Now, he has released to us some bottom-line figures, but no one trusts him. We don't, I had no idea. We just don't know.
When you say bottom-line figures, what are you trusting?
They, they sent out another, they sent out an aid run that said, if we don't do nothing, we think this is what you're going to get. But it, you looked at it and said, it just didn't make sense. It just didn't make sense at all. And I didn't, and when I saw it, and I said, wait a second now, it just, it just, it just didn't look right, it just, just things were different. It just didn't look like a normal aid run. It just, it looked like something they came up with. And I just didn't, I just have a feeling, I know we're still got like two months here, I don't want to go two months without having to answer, because we've got some tough decisions I believe we're going to need to make. But I'd like to think within the next few weeks, we'll get some type of concession from up there with something. Hoping. Lisa?
I've been reading different things in the press about what the timing issues are, and I gather that there is coming up, the beginning of March, I guess, that the district has to make a report to, I think it's the controller's office, but I could be mistaken about that, about what our tax levy calculation is. So how does that impact on our situation with the state aid, or lack thereof?
Well, what they are, what they have told the business officials is that they will give us our building aid figure. Because a building aid figure is not going to change, because that's pretty much set in stone. That isn't something that they dicker with up there. They've already dickered with it, with the assumed amortization rate. So they've already made that adjustment, so there, there won't be any more. So they've said that they will give us our, our building aid, and that's really the last piece to finish, the, the, the tax levy. The problem I see is having is, depending on what your state aid run is, you don't know if you're going to exceed or not. You don't know at this point, because that's one of the questions they ask you, do you plan on exceeding? Yes or no? I mean, so far, we checked off no. Later on, you'll come in and say, are you, later on in the process with, this is a preliminary, letting you know what to do, but then later on, at the end, you're going to have to say, are you going to exceed or not?
And, well, what point do we need to commit to that?
That's not until, that's after the budget vote. It's actually after the budget vote. It's their certification that you stayed under the tax cap, is basically what. Right now, you're preliminary telling them, I'm planning to stay under, or I'm planning to go over. But then later on in the process, you have to tell them, did I or didn't I go over? But that comes later on down the line, after the budget vote's done.
So, that's okay. You know, the, the rumor is, he's, he's stated that he's not going to give state runs until April 1st, I think? He would have a budget by April 1st?
Well, give a state aid runs when he gets a budget.
Right, that's what he said. Well, yeah.
He hopes to have a budget by April 1st.
By April 1st, right. Let's just, you know.
But if he does give it to you, I mean, if we do get an aid run on April 1st, we still have time.
Okay. So, based on our, our calendar here, what is that really going to do to us if we get state aid runs on March 1st, or April 1st? We're going to have to invest in a lot of extra coffee for Tom.
Well, a lot will depend upon what decisions need to be made. I mean, right now, you're sitting over $700,000 above the tax levy. Now, is this going to come down? Yeah, it's going to come down, but I don't see it coming down $700,000. You know, unfortunately, I think at this moment, we've got to start something that we did a number of years ago and resurrect, was a list, a tiered list of potential cuts. I, I think, unfortunately, we're at that place. I knew sooner or later we'd get back to it, I was hoping we'd put it off, and we've been able to put it off for a couple of years. A lot of districts haven't been able to do that, but I think it's something we have to resurrect, to at least put it on our radar, things to consider. And one of the things that, you know, I'd hate to go through, and you do this exercise, and we come up with a list of a half a million dollars worth of stuff that, all right, this is what we need to do. And so we make those tough decisions, and oop, April 1st comes in, oh, here's $400,000. And, you know, we've put people on edge, and, you know, is my job on the line, and all this type of thing, you know? So, you know, you hate to do that, you know? We put a list together a few years ago, and it had $10 million on there, I think, just about. But, and basically, we put together a list of everything that is discretionary. I'm discretionary, you know? Principals are discretionary. Joe's not, but a lot of places are discretionary. I'm on the list, now where you get rent on the list is a whole different thing, but I think it's something we may have to resurrect again here shortly, so at least our administrators start thinking about it, to, if we've got some hard decisions to make, it's time to start those wheels spinning now, and see what we can do. I mean, there's a lot of things to look at, you know, potentially. I mean, where is our money? It's in personnel, unfortunately. I mean, that's where, where people, it's a people business. But, you know, we have a lot of people tied up. I know in the finance community, we talked about enrollments at the various buildings, and what we could potentially, you know, at least start discussing those things, to see whether or not, we do have to make some hard decisions that way. But at least we should start putting those lists together, because maybe we don't need it this year. Time is coming, time is coming, where, I don't see how any school district, anyone in New York State can continue to go as usual. Because if we're in this, if, if your state aid is flat, and let's take a Poughkeepsie for instance, if their state aid's flat, they get to increase their budget as much as we do, because our tax levies are very similar. In fact, they can probably do less, because they probably don't have the same building that's going on. So where I could increase that tax levy, I forgot how much it was, by $584,000, they probably can't even do a half a million dollars on a budget that's more than twice the size of ours. You know, what are they going to go through, you know, as far as that's concerned? But you get into the situation where, and I'm just using 2 percent as a tax cap, deeper a little above, a little below, 2 percent, state aid zero. Overall, your revenues are less than 2 percent increases. But on the expenditure side, you, you still have the employee benefits, you have students that need to be tuitioned out, you need, you need teachers. At the same time, you're expanding Common Core, you're wanting to add technology, you wanted to do all these things, and, and it's, they want you to do this, but they don't give us the resources to be able to do it. And that, that's where, you know, I've, this is the first time I'm really starting to hit my head on the wall, because I don't know, you know, I think we've done a good job here as a school district to be able to keep where we are, but I think we finally hit it. And so, now, we've really got to look, unfortunately. Lisa?
But I, I mean, I think that's the wrong, that's the wrong approach. I'm not criticizing you, Tom. But, this issue that we're facing now is an entirely manufactured issue.
Oh, I, I agree with you.
This is not that the state cannot afford to increase aid. This is the, the powers that be in Albany playing games with one another and using school districts as a pawn. It may be that we will someday come to the point that you're talking about, but I don't think we should plan on eviscerating our programs this year because of gamesmanship in Albany.
I, I agree with you there. I, please, I mean, this year, I'm taking, I'm, I'm looking into the future, saying 2 percent, how, how can you run a district by only going up 2 percent forever? Ever? How, how are you going to do that? It's, it's impossible. It's impossible to do that. But I understand what you're saying. There is a lot of gaming shit going up there right now, and it's affecting us right now.
It's impossible to do it if you're not making up that revenue stream somewhere else. And where we've made it up in the past is from the state, from the money that we get from the state. So, the reason that we're in the position we're in now isn't because the state is bankrupt and can't afford to give us the money. And that's not necessarily going to be the case in the future either, at least not in the near future. You know, there may, there, there almost certainly will be financial downturns at some point in the more distant future, but, you know, financially, New York State's doing well, and there's nothing on the horizon right now to make you think that that's going to change in the near term. It's all politics. So, I want to find a, a solution that allows us to avoid the sort of disruption we were talking about, where, you know, people are saying, what's going to happen to my job? What's going to happen to my kid? Next year, is my kid going to be in a class with 35 kids? You know, how can we do that? How can we responsibly plan?
I'm just saying, put the list together. I'm not saying we do it. I'm saying we put the list together, because if it doesn't happen, I'm sure we're going to have to make some cuts this year, and next year, you're going to have to be some more. Because if we're only going up 2, but salaries, benefits, tuitions are outpacing the 2 percent, that means we've got to cut back someplace. So I think we've finally gotten to that place where we're going to have to start thinking about, take a look at the list, prioritizing it, and hopefully, it doesn't happen. I mean, that's the way it's happened in the past. A lot of times, we spent many hours and days putting it together to find out we didn't have to do it, but there were some times when we had to do it. We had, we had to. Diane?
I think, you know, we don't know those numbers, and we don't know when we'll know those numbers, but I think you do have to plan for the worst, and the numbers that we have now, I mean, I think that list, maybe within a month, will have to start to be generated, because it doesn't happen overnight. It takes a lot of consideration, and the administrators, it takes them a lot of time to come up with, you know, what they can cut. It doesn't mean that we have to be discussing it or poring over it until we absolutely have to be discussing it and over it.
Correct.
And that may not be until April, when we actually have the numbers, but it is something, you know, that you and Joe and the administrators will have to put together, because we can't wait until April, go, yep, come up with that list now, because it will take time. Hopefully, we won't have to use it, and we certainly don't want anyone to be worrying about their job, or, you know, what's going to happen to programs, but, you know, just to be responsible, you have to, you have to start creating that. But, you know, it'd be nice if we would never have to talk about it until we need to, because I remember a few years ago, when we had those lists, and how stressful it was for people in the community and for staff, you know, having, knowing about the retirements earlier was beneficial to us, and that helped us quite a bit.
Oh, certainly.
Unfortunately, we have no control over the state to get them to do anything, but, yeah, I mean, I would agree that we have to have it, and hopefully, we won't have to talk about it.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Board committee reports.
Want to start with the canceled meetings?
We'll start with communications.
All right. Well, this is, we have twofold communications. I'm going to take the first part, Deirdre gets the second part.
January 16th is it?
January 16th, yeah. So, I'm going to skip over some of this, because Deirdre's got further updates for her part, but most important about, or the bulk of what we talked about, was this superintendent's conference day coming up on Friday, February 13th. We are all invited to go for the keynote and the, the early morning coffee. The entire day is being dedicated to technology, and Steve has gotten five technology trainers, four of whom are teachers, to present the keynote. They, the idea is that they're talking about the state of technology in New York State and, and education, what's being done around the state, how it's impacting classrooms, and sort of start the general conversation for the teachers. They then are going to break out into smaller sessions. There'll be sessions mostly for, for the chancellor teachers, but anybody's invited to attend to talk about how to use their new equipment, the iPads and the MacBooks, in their classrooms. And then at the middle school, the sixth grade team was very interested in sort of piggybacking on what's happening at chancellor, so that they can make sure there's a continuum of learning once those kids get to the middle school, because at the moment, the level of ability with technology used is sort of all over the map, and it tends to slow them down a little bit. They're also going to do, at BMS and at the high school, some work on the Google app suite, how they can set up Google classrooms, how to promote efficiencies in teacher classrooms, and how, what apps are available for, for the teachers to use as, as teaching tools. We then moved on to the BOE goal number three, celebration of educational progress. And we're still sort of grappling with this idea of how to publicly acknowledge and celebrate the achievements of students and staff. The revamped website is going to be a great place to do a lot of this kind of thing, but we're still all feeling a little bit like there, there could be other ways that we tackle this. You know, Joe's pointed out that the amount that he's tweeting out is a really great method for getting news out. He's, you know, learning things from all over the He's, you know, learning things from all over the three buildings that he wouldn't otherwise know. And so therefore, the community wouldn't necessarily know. So that's a great starting point. But we'd really like to get full board feedback on some of these other ideas that are listed here. Talked further about the idea about having board presentations. And Dee's presentation was great tonight. But we were thinking, you know, maybe it comes down to, in terms of time, maybe each building gets a board presentation night in the year. And the principals can work with their staff to determine what that looks like, what it becomes, how to celebrate the achievements in each building. So we'd love some feedback on that idea. We also talked about finding ways to acknowledge staff who go above and beyond. And we have, we have no idea how to do that. So if anybody's got any suggestions, that would be great. And we also talked about publicizing pieces of the monthly principal reports. Principals are already giving Mary Ann typed up notes. So if we could cull information from those, because they do come with such great information, if there are ways that we can advertise those things a little bit more widely along, through the community, that would be great. And then we want your impressions on the idea about having board member presence at events that happen in all three buildings. If the members would be interested or willing to go to the Take a Stand event that's happening tomorrow, the Chancellor Science Night Out, things like that. If we could sort of work out a schedule of, for being there and being present at those events. But that's up to the full board. So if we could get your feedback on that, that'd be great. Deirdre will talk a little bit more about the village collabora, town and village collaboration. And we forgot to talk about the graduation banners, but it's sort of vaguely on our radar. We gotta get going on those.
So I guess I'll just follow up with a few more points. On February 3rd, we did return to some of the topics that Laura has already outlined. I don't think I really need to rehearse them anymore except that, to say that Steve Jensen showed us some of the ways in which he's using technology to support planning for the superintendent's conference day. We got into a sort of more philosophical discussion about how enhancing our website, you know, what are our bigger goals with doing that? And we have focused a lot on communicating out to various members of the community, to families. We also don't want to lose sight of the fact that technology and communication is really here to support learning, to enhance learning. And therefore, teachers are really the people who need to guide us and give us feedback in terms of how it really is working in the classroom and the different buildings. So that's just kind of following up on your point. We went back to board goal number one, which is to support and to promote and improve parent-teacher communication. And one of the questions, how do we know if we're making progress on that goal? Joe reminded us of the sort of setting of the tone at the beginning of the year and the open houses. And I think we kind of felt we got off on a very strong note with that message. We'd like to follow up now and rather than turn to something like a survey, which is what we had originally talked about. We realized we're gonna have a Q and A feature in the new website that might in some sense give us some of that information before we move into any sort of survey. We would like to get together with an ad hoc group of teachers very soon. The communications committee had sort of follow up on their sense of how communication's working between families, between home and school. Toward that end, students in grades six through 12 will all be receiving their own Rhinebeck Central School District email addresses. And there's going to be a whole outreach effort to parents around the use of those addresses. But the thought is that that will facilitate communication between teachers and students, but also teachers and parents, which is of course part of that goal. We discussed also the fact that different families, different parents have different views of how, you know, they want their students to be using technology depending on their age. You know, middle school families often feel like differently about it than high school families. So we want to be sensitive to that and really listen to what we hear from our parent community. We talked further about board goal number three, which, again, feedback on what you were saying, Laura, about recognition and different means to recognize, such as we've had tonight in kind of formal settings, but informally as well. And Deirdre Burns, who's not here tonight, reminded us that the former Board of Education President, Alyssa Casio, had some ideas for sort of more personal communications of appreciation to staff, faculty, members of our community. So actually, just today, I wrote to Alyssa to see if maybe she could give us some leads on that. And that's really following up on some feedback we've got informally about how important it is just to recognize every day smaller acts of kindness and devotion to our profession in the schools. So we do want to be cognizant of recognizing what goes on every day as well as sort of fantastic projects, which we're always happy to hear about. Twitter is a space we hope that can become available to all members of the school district in a relatively not work-intensive way. We're very sensitive to the fact that nobody needs more time being dedicated to writing reports or press releases or, you know, learning to become PR professionals. I mean, that's, that's not what we're here for. We're here to teach and to learn. So we talked about how maybe Twitter could become a way that's kind of relatively low commitment in terms of that sort of time. But we're looking also for others. And we do really want to communicate, as a communications committee, that communication is not meant to become an extra burden. It's something that we want to work for us in terms of our mission. So that's pretty much it. Oh, also, Joe has finalized the Rhinebeck Collaboration meeting with the town and village for February 18th, which is really wonderful to hear. Our next meeting will be March 6th.
Diane?
Do you have a time for Friday?
Oh, yeah, the breakfast starts, it's between 7:30 and 8:00. And then the keynote starts at 8:00. They will be going to their first breakout session at 10:30? 9:30, 9:30.
The keynote's at 8?
The keynote's at 8:00, yeah, in the auditorium.
So some feedback that you're looking for on the, so I agree with what you're saying. I said we have to be careful that our good intentions don't cause work for other people. You know, when I see the word presentation, you know, we want people to come. We want to hear about their great projects. We don't want them to feel like they have to put together some presentation for us and not want to come. So we just have to, you know, they could just come and show us their work and just off the cuff tell us what it's about. And I think that that gets the point across. So I just, when I see that presentation, it makes me thanks for them that they're putting together something for us. You know, so we just want to make sure that, you know, it's a good thing that they're happy to come and be recognized for the great things that they do. As far as recognizing the staff members, I mean, there are certainly ways. It just, again, comes down to who's going to do it. You know, you could have a staff member of the month or of the week. But how do you highlight that? Is it the website? Who puts that together? Do they get a special parking permit for the week or something? I don't, you know, I don't know. Again, a lot of it comes down to who, you know, who's gonna do it. The administrators, the principal, when they come and speak to us, the part about should it be on the website or School Messenger? I mean, I would definitely say it shouldn't be on School Messenger because if we start flooding too much information on there, people are, it's gonna see it like junk mail. They're not gonna read anything. You know, they come to the meeting so people could see it live. You know, it's in the minutes. They could read it, or it's on YouTube. So I think that there's three opportunities for anyone that wants to hear the great presentations. So I don't know, you know, maybe highlighting something on the website if we already have that information is okay. But, you know, we're giving them three opportunities to see that presentation. So, and they're great and they're full of information. People should look at them. But I think we're already giving a lot of, a lot of ways for people to look at that. As far as presence in the school, I think we've talked about this before. I think I've mentioned it before. And I think it's important for us to be out there. Not everyone has to come to us, that we should go out. We're at a lot of events with our own kids. I think it's probably more important to go to the events that your kids are not in. You know, when your kids move out from a building, like how often do, you know, probably any of us anymore go to Chancellor and see what goes on there? So I think it would be great for us to take turns to go see what goes on in the schools. You know, I know that we've, when we've been invited, you know, most of us make an effort to attend. But, you know, I don't know if we want to take turns looking at the calendar and, you know, you know, that, I guess, should be on us to do. And we could do that. I mean, if we just took a month or something, we could certainly look through and say, send down an email and say that these are the events coming up and, you know, try to get to as many of them. Because it helps keep us informed if we're out and about. And it shows that our support for them as well. So I would definitely be in support of that. Maybe that's some ways to go about it. That's it.
Thank you.
Finance committee?
That's me. Let's see. So we were updated on the cafeteria. Lunch numbers were up at CLS and slightly down at BMS and RHS. Breakfast sales were up, which was kind of a new thing. So the breakfast is starting to be a hit, I guess. The program's still operating at a loss, but less than it was last year. And you have to take into consideration, this loss is prior to our new food director starting. So right, he, so this isn't with all the new changes. We paid off the new software in October, so that added to that. Everyone saw the new lunch menu that went out for staff. It looks great. And, you know, hopefully down the road, maybe it can be offered to the high school students at some time. Still using local farms, but like sometimes a year, like now, it's hard for them to get product. They're still, still working out, pricing out meals. There's two different softwares that are used between Redhook and Rhinebeck. So that's something that has to be worked out. And the ability for parents to pay online, to put money to the accounts, that should be coming soon, in the next few months. And that should benefit the program as well. The next thing we talked about was the technology plan. Starting to look at a section, a second option or an option B. Nothing has been decided yet, but looking at another option. The first option was that one-to-one model. The second option would move the timetable up. So all, all the buildings would have a device or a cart available at each grade level and including the special areas. And this would all be in all three buildings by the 2016, 2017 year. It does not include a one-to-one model. It does give, you know, every student the ability to have access to a device. And it also gives the staff and Steve the opportunity to work through any issues or to see how it works or, you know, which, which grades need the devices a lot or little. It does cut the cost down a little bit. It still is over a million dollars for all of this, this Plan B as well. There's some scheduling issues that have to get worked out with the carts. An example of this would be in one of the grades, all the teachers teach math at the same time. So if they all wanted to use devices for math, they couldn't do that with the cart system. But, so that's, that's something that still have to get worked out. So there isn't a recommendation at this time. They're still working through different scenarios. But this is, this is the latest one that they're working on now. Budget update, I think Tom went through that already. Staff and enrollment predictions, predictions. We looked at that and there is a chart in your packets. We see about 30 fewer students in BMS next year as these smaller classes start moving into the upper grades. You know, it's quite a big change in the middle school. Administration's gonna have to look at these numbers and, you know, you can, you can see, and they are just predictions. I mean, you can see what it, how it changes class sizes, which, you know, can be a nice thing. Something they have to look at if it's something that can be afforded to have the smaller class sizes. But again, they're just predictions. At any time, if more students could come in, they're guesses based on the numbers that we have now. So that's something that they'll have to look at just going forward. Going to the multi-year fund balance predictions. You'll remember last year, the finance committee, the decision was made to have a slimmer margin between the budget and the revenues. And that which create, that creates less fund balance. When you look at the chart, I mean, it, Tom showed us a chart that shows how quickly you can go from 4% down to like 2.3. It happens very fast. So in order to keep that at 4%, you know, you have to lower your expenses. Tom talked about that a little bit. And keeping this margin tight, it doesn't, it doesn't account for unexpected expenses that happen, that happened this year with special ed. So when you, when you make that tighter budget, that's what happens. Tom's also gonna put together, before we meet with our lawmakers, this was an idea from Mark, put together a list of things that we could talk to them about, specific examples of things in the budgets or things that they could lobby on our behalf for that could really help. I think that was also in the webinar that, that came out, to bring specific examples that you can say, whether it's unfunded mandates or exactly how it affects your district, hours, times, money, that you can show them that they can then go back. Apparently, that works very well if you give them specific examples. So that's something that, that will work out. And then you see the rest of documentation there that goes along with the report. You can look at.
Any questions, Laura?
I have a question. On the cafeteria program, I know that parents are gonna be able to pay online soonish, hopefully. Is there any mechanism for notification to go out to parents when the balance is getting low or becoming overdrawn?
That's what we're kind of working on right now is with School Messenger, there is a way of doing it. We just have to figure out how to get that information there. So it's not easy of getting that balance in there. Because most of our stuff comes out of School Tool. So it pulls from there. And actually, School Tool has the ability to do that and pull it to us. But someone won't let us move the data from the cafeteria system up to the student information system. Because they don't want anything pulling around with that. So it, having, figure out a way to get those monies into there so that we can get a report out of there so we could send the messages, we're still trying to figure that all out. It's doable so that anytime any parent goes into a negative, it would automatically generate a School Messenger notice to them. Because I get them from Arlington. It's always my daughter. When my daughter runs out of food, bam, I get a message. And I set it up, anytime it gets below $10, send me a reminder.
Well, that's what I was gonna say.
And that's what we'd be looking to set up too. Not when you go negative, but just to let you know when you're starting to get it. And once you get below that $10, though, you may end up getting a message every couple days saying, you know, you're below $10 or you're in a negative.
Well, I think, I think that would be better than getting the note that you're now $100 overdrawn for your three kids. And, you know, we might recover the money faster if it's smaller increments.
Yep.
Nope. Anything else for finance? Okay. Personnel?
That's me too. Personnel, the majority of the meeting, the committee worked on policy 9110, which is the confidential managerial employees. So we worked on that. Joe's gonna make some tweaks to that. We also discussed briefly the upcoming negotiations with the administrators.
Questions? Okay. Audit committee?
Do you want me to do this? You want to take it? Okay. All right. So you may have all seen broadcast far and wide that the request for applications for an outside audit member have gone out. With any luck at all, we're gonna have some candidates by our next meeting, which is February 24th. We set a new sort of soft deadline for the 20th so that hopefully we can get some of those letters in and we can start looking at some candidates. Our internal auditor is, we, they've had some personnel changes. So we've got a new contact. We asked her to sort of give us some idea of costs associated with looking at our, help me, Tom, our payroll system. She came back with sort of a laundry list of tests that could be run on the payroll system, which doesn't at all refer to the risk assessment, which was done a couple of years ago. So we're, we've asked Tom to go back to her and say, you know, read the risk assessment, come back to us, let's talk about where we need to look, what kinds of work we need to do and what that costs and if we've got the money to do it. and what that costs and if we've got the money to do it. Tom also talked about records management being an additional area that he'd like to try to find some efficiencies. Currently, there are no packages that are affordable or useful in every way that we need them to be, so we're going to continue to keep that on the back burner. So we are hoping to have our new person, Donna Crowley from Vannacore, come meet with us on the 24th. And then in our March meeting, we'll see Steve Bangor, our claims auditor for our annual update.
Questions for audit committee? Okay. Facilities committee?
Okay. So we had not a huge agenda for this meeting and especially considering that we had missed the previous month's meeting, we were all very happy about that. So while you may recall in the past, you know, a couple of months ago, that we discussed the fact that BOSI, Duchess BOSI was putting out a request for proposals for architectural and engineering services for the building condition survey, which districts are mandated to do periodically. And we had decided to join in with BOSI's RFP, as did a number of other districts. So ultimately, the way it shook out, there was only us and I think Spack and Kill in that, RFP in addition to BOSI's. And so Spack and Kill decided not to go with the ultimate choice that BOSI's made and BOSI's chose somebody that we didn't like, so we're not going with them either. So Tom has had drafted an RFP for us, for Rhinebeck, to get a person to do the building condition survey for us. That was supposed to go out at the end of this week, are we still on target for that?
It should be. Getting it out there by now.
And then you can see the dates in the meeting notes of our plan for how to follow through on that. Since we are planning to do a, or at least we're talking about planning to do a capital project, this BCS will be valuable to us not only for the project itself, you know, for the BCS itself, but also to give us some experience with the winning architect, to see whether this is a company we would want to use as the architect for a capital project. We also talked about fuel, oil, and electricity prices. Tom alluded to that a bit during budget discussion. We're doing very well on fuel, oil prices this year relative to our projections. We're doing okay on the electricity prices relative to our projections, but because of the usage issues, we have to keep an eye on that. And then, turning back to the potential capital project, I think you may also recall that we discussed in the past that this is a bit of a, more than a bit of a, of a big thing to do, and it being New York State, there are lots of, there are lots of steps that need to be taken and lots of approvals that need to be gotten, and it's complicated. So we are, the committee is in the process of reviewing how procedurally the referendum would be prepared for voter approval for such a project. And we expect to be following up with District's Bond Council and, you know, discussing the procedures with the material that Tom's already given us so that we can at some point come to the board and say, okay, here is our recommendation, now let's talk about how we go forward. That's it.
Questions for facilities?
Just a quick comment. I love the idea that you're pursuing the idea of solar panels and seeing if that, that might help mitigate some of our electrical increases.
We're hoping.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions? All right. We'll move on to the New York State School Board Association Board Achievement Award and Board Excellence Award. So in your packet.
This is something new, as far as I know, but New York State School Boards Association has a school board recognition program, which, you know, deals with board members in attending various things, such as developmental activities, such as the new member academy, the Board Officers Academy, the annual convention, the legal conferences, and the various regional workshops that we have. And I believe that there are three board members who received recognition. And we have the actual, they're in the office, you'll get the real ones. Not the photocopy, you got real ones. And Mark Fleschauer was recognized for participation in leadership development training totaling 75 points. So congratulations, Mark. And Diane Lyons also with 75 points also. And lastly, we have Laura Shulkin, who's got 150 points.
What we correct with that education.
So congratulations. Appreciate it. Give yourself a hand.
Go ahead, Rick.
My personal congratulations, just reinforcing what I've already experienced in the short time back here. It's a really classy group, I think.
Oh, yeah. It is. No doubt about it.
So we'll move on to good news. Anyone have any good news to report?
Go ahead.
Laura, I saw your hand first.
There's tons and we missed a meeting, so there's that much more, but I did want to point out that the Chancellor's Science Night Out and ribbon cutting was the best-attended event I have ever been to in this district. I think even Marvin Krebs would say that it was astounding. He was positively giddy.
Almost speechless.
Almost speechless, yeah. There were over 75 adults in that little science lab and those kids were so excited to show off what they were doing and the robots they had programmed, and it was really, it was quite an incredible night, so, really good stuff.
Lisa?
Well, I was going to say that, but since, no, no, it's okay, it's okay. Since Laura stole my thunder, I will simply say that I consider good news that today was not a snow day.
Yeah, I don't know what I'd like to add, but I was hoping we were all going to be here.
All right. Is there any other good news? Okay. Old business? I'm just going to cover the veterans thing under other, but if there's any old business.
I guess this is old business. We were asking amongst ourselves the fate of the letter that you crafted, Lisa, long ago, and did that letter go out?
I don't think that it did. You know, the last I heard about it was that Joe and Mark and I got together and we made some, or we suggested some edits to it and Joe was going to revise it and I don't think it went out, but I could be mistaken.
Want to follow up with Joe?
Did you, do you recall signing it?
I don't think so. No.
Okay, then it must not have gone out.
Not that I didn't, I just don't know.
Still coffee, as Rick said. Me too, me too. All four reasons.
Okay.
So we already alluded to the fact that we're going to meet with our elected officials and, you know, this year seems more important than we go and be as informed and as prepared as possible.
Do we have a schedule for that?
Not yet. Not yet.
Yeah, I haven't heard of any.
Now, I don't know.
He hasn't sent around, usually he'll send around any available on these dates, so I haven't seen that.
Usually contact them first and they get back to us.
If there's any opportunity, I know that traditionally this board has just gone to the local offices of our elected officials, but if there are opportunities for protest of some kind in Albany, would you share that with us? I don't know of other field.
Yes, and this one normally has a lobby day, but we've found that it's more productive to meet with the legislators in their own office here in the district rather than go to Albany to their office because then we have to share their time with other school districts. So it seems to work out better if we can get their, in their office, you know, just us, so.
Well, I don't know, charter schools go and stand in the plaza and shout and, you know, any opportunity for public schools to have their day.
Right.
It's appreciated.
All right. Other old business?
No, not much.
Okay. There is no public, so we'll skip over a public comment.
Why did those veterans leave?
Diane?
So I had asked Tom if he could talk about what's on everyone's mind, which is the snow days and the fact that our district has gone over. And before Tom goes over the schedule, I just wanted to say, because I have several people have, I mean, everyone is kind of talking about it and grumbling about it and, you know, it's certainly never Joe or Tom's thought to ruin anyone's spring break. Mother Nature has total control over the situation and, you know, making the decision for the entire district, not just the village of Rhinebeck or this street or that street, is difficult and the timing involved, the calls have to be made very early, can't just decide at 8 o'clock, you know, it has to be done very early for the buses and the drivers to get in. So it's not an easy decision and it's always made with student safety, but Tom, if you could go over what's going to happen next, we've gone over.
We'll too.
And we'll presumably continue.
Hopefully we won't have any more snow days.
Well, it is only the beginning of February.
Let's get them in and then get them home. We'll wait and see what that looks like. I don't know, it's, I've been on duty for three days and two out of the three days we've got to make decisions, but.
Thursday comes more, Toms.
What's that?
Thursday more snow.
Yeah. Joe, what is it like down there?
It's fine, it's fine.
You know, it's this one where there's nothing out there and you're calling it, that's, you know, and that's even with Joe when he called it the night before, he was really, a couple weeks ago when he called it the night before, because a lot of other school districts have done that, and then the next day comes and, and, you know, it didn't turn out to what it was supposed to be, but like I tell Joe, it's like, we had to call school anyways. Whether you called it the night before at 5:00 in the morning, you had to call it off. I mean, it wasn't going to happen.
And in that situation, you know, we were, again, affected by our state government calling a state emergency ahead of time.
We didn't get a foot, but we did get about 15, I mean, we still got plenty.
Yeah, you got plenty. And that's the same thing with yesterday, you know, some school districts called it the night before and it was like, you know, I'm not going to do that unless I saw Redhook or Hyde Park and all of them did.
Actually, Hyde Park did.
They called it the night before? I know Milbrook did.
Redhook did not, but Hyde.
I know Redhook hadn't, I didn't know Hyde Park had, but I knew Milbrook had, but once again, that wasn't too hard. You saw what was coming down on that, you know, and then this morning I knew it was because of the roads. But anyways, so, the first day we have lost is the Monday after Easter, so that is April 6th. So April 6th now becomes a school day. If we have another day, it will become the Monday before, and that's going to be March 30th. And the next day is March 31st, okay? So we're looking to preserve as much of that spring break as possible, meaning Easter, Good Friday, and then going back from there, so. So then the next day is March 31st, then April 1st, and then April 2nd. So those, that's the order. It's April 6th, March 30th, 31st, the 1st and 2nd. So we'll be getting notices out to everybody, let them know that, but then again, it may change, and I don't, you know, it's unfortunate. And one of the things that I'm really concerned about, though it is March, or April, I mean, by the time this gets done, if something happens after April. I mean, the way this year is going, who knows?
Mental health if it's still snowing. What kind of flexibility does the district have in terms of determining the number of snow days that we have?
Well, that really becomes a matter of the calendar itself, you know, and how many days are available to begin with. And I know Joe is going through it for next year, and he can't come up, this year was your week, we were able to get six days in here, and we've never been able to get six days, but since we started so early and ending so late, it gave us more flexibility. So typically, he tries to build at least five in, and I think so far, he's only been able to build four in, so next year looks like a lot tighter. We have the same type of winter this year as we do next year. There is going to be no spring break, unfortunately, or there's going to be a lot less of it. We're mandated to go to school, the children, the students are mandated to go to school 176 days. Our kids go 180 days. The contract for the teachers, 184 days. So there is flexibility there, but that's a discussion between people higher up than me.
Well, but I mean, would we be better off thinking about starting next year with more school, with more snow days and, you know, if we don't wind up, you know, I'm just going to make up the numbers now. If we started out the year with 10 snow days instead of five snow days, and then we wind up with, you know, using seven days, adding back three days somewhere rather than, you know, starting with five snow days and then having to subtract from a break, which, you know, nobody likes not having an Easter, a spring break, but if people have planned on going away for a spring break and then.
Unfortunately, the spring break this year has been a day here, a day there.
Well, I know, but I mean.
That's what I try to tell my kids, you know.
As a philosophical matter, would we be, would it be prudent of us to start thinking about constructing the calendar in that way?
Joe would love to be able to put 10 days in there. It's just physically impossible.
No, I know.
It's just impossible because, you know, how you build some days in, like for next year, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, it's a school day. It's a school day next year, where this year it was, because of that extra week we had, not only did he build six days in, but you had the Wednesday before, and we had the Monday after Easter. Those things aren't even on the calendar next year, those are school days. And looking at the first day that the teachers will come in is, you know, that Tuesday after Labor Day. And then the last day is set by the state, based on the region's day, you know, what's, they set the end.
Can we start before Labor Day?
Our contract with the teachers states, we'd have to come into agreement with teachers to come in, or is that a possibility? Joe has gone to them in previous years and asked, but so far they've said no. It might be a little more amenable now, looking at this past year and when they look at the calendar and see, you know, we're kind of hoping that they maybe have the conference days before Labor Day so kids come in on that Tuesday instead of waiting until the Wednesday. In fact, we used to start the Tuesdays, it used to be conference days, and they come in Thursday, Friday.
Tom, could you clarify, just because people ask all the time why we can't add it to the end, I mean, the regions sets the last day of school for the high school kids, but chancellor already goes later than, than goes during the region's time.
No, they're.
They end at the same time.
End at the same time.
So.
It's usually that Thursday, the Thursday before graduation, that is the last day.
The region's rating day.
Region's rating.
And the state says that that has to be the last day.
That's it.
So there's no.
And I don't know about elementary kids. Could the elementary kids go longer? I don't know. It probably could.
But would that, does that count if it's just? You know.
High school, remember the other thing too, is we have the kids here 180 days versus the 176 that is mandated. So the children are here four days more than they have to be, but that's good. But they are here four days more than they have to be by the state's.
But that doesn't really help us with snow days because you're not going to make staff come in on a declared snow day.
Well, yeah, well, that's where you get it, you don't, they're not, the teachers then aren't in for the 184 days they're supposed to be.
Right.
And that's where you kind of get tricked up and saying, you know, I for one, I don't know, I haven't had to cross that path yet, but to me, you only work 183 of the 184, then you should be docked one day. But it doesn't work that way typically. It doesn't work. I've never experienced that, so I don't know and I hope I never have to experience that. Schedule's for 184, why don't you, 184? And they've usually done pretty good, because I do remember one year. And they've usually done pretty good because I do remember one year when they came in on that Friday, they didn't have to. That Friday they were, the teachers were out, but they came in that day and did it as a conference day, that, that last Friday, which was not a school day and it was not a teacher day.
Tom, this, this really isn't a significant teacher issue anyway, because people make those days up by doing two hours after school for five days in a row or whatever it is. It's kid days.
Yep. It's kid days.
And that's, that's where the crunch is in terms of kid days.
I was approached about this particular Friday coming up as a, you know, conference day and changed that to a school day. I just thought it was way too late to be able to, to date, say, what are you guys, were you willing to do that? And then a lot of people already have plans for this weekend. The parents, they have a four day weekend. They have plans.
It's the same problem.
Plus the problem is, is you have this great day planned for technology on Friday. How am I going to do that in two and three hour blocks after school? Now, if it was curriculum writing or something of that nature, yeah, but this is a specific one. We have guests coming in and all that type of stuff. I just.
You have to get a notice.
It just, you know, if it was three weeks ago, yeah, you know, maybe, but to me it was just, they came to me like late Friday afternoon and it was like, I don't know, let's, of course, wait till Joe goes and then come.
Figured they could get you.
Not just.
It'll snow Friday if you do that.
Well, that's one thing I am concerned about is, you know, Thursday, get them in here, then the snow comes later and affects the next day, even though we don't have kids, but the road's good. I'm kind of thinking, no matter what, I'm going to get them in here. I just hope I don't have to go with the two hour delay, but I'm kind of hoping that roads will be good. I'm kind of hoping that this is just an inch and psh, off it goes. Let's hope.
We're all open.
I've had enough. Let it land in Boston. Let it down to it. I never liked the Patriots and Red Sox and the Bruins anyways.
I don't either, but I don't wish them an earth's air.
Is there any other, other items before we talk about the veterans exemption?
No.
Okay. So we should have a discussion about the veterans exemption. We've had our public hearing. If we decide that we would like to go with something other than the default, we would have to have another, a second public hearing. I'd just like to know around the table what your feelings are about the exemption.